All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council regular meeting of February 14th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
City Clerk, here.
Pledge of Allegiance? How about Deputy Chief Larrington, you wanna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Uh, move, or second?
Second.
Whew, that's a tough one. All right, I'm gonna go with move by Alderman Favor and seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Uh, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
All right, the agenda is approved. Moving on to presentations, Agenda Item D, we have none. Uh, public participation, Agenda Item E, we've got a couple, but they wanna speak during the actual topic itself. So moving on to Agenda Item F, appointments. Uh, we got quite a few appointments here. So the appointments are, uh, and I need to read all those, correct? Okay. The appointment of Acting Fire Chief Mike Thomas to the Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Board and the Fire Pension Board until no longer Acting Fire Chief. Number two, appointment of Linda Babcock and James Briscoe to the Finance Advisory Committee, each for completion of a four-year term through December 31st, 2025. Number three, reappointment of Max Maxwell as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2023. Number four, reappointment of India Washington to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2024. Number five, reappointment of Sam Fitch to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for the completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2024. Number six, reappointment of Melissa Beck, Helen Ubenstock, and Ellingsworth Webb to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, each for completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2024. Number seven, reappointment of Sam Walt to the Economic Development Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2024. Number eight, reappointment of Joe Gastiger to the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2024. And then reappointment of, number nine, reappointment of Robert Owens as Chair and James Rhodes as a member to the Airport Advisory Board, each for the completion of a four-year term through December 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
Second.
So that was moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Uh, any discussion on that at all? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
All right, those appointments are done, which is fantastic. We're really stocking a lot of our commissions, which is great. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E or G, approval of the minutes. Number one, minutes submitted by the City Clerk, we have none. Uh, and item number two, minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary, A, minutes of the Joint Review Board Meeting of October 22nd, 2021, and minutes of the regular City Council Meeting of January 24th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to the consent agenda, Agenda Item H. Number one, accounts payable and payroll through February 14th, 2022 in the amount of $6,504,646.49. Number two, investment and bank balance summary through December 2021. And number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through December 2021. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Uh, roll call, please. Or, sorry, any discussion? I was moving quick. Hearing none, roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Excellent. Moving on to public hearings, we have none. Uh, Agenda Item J, considerations, we have none of those either. Uh, Agenda Item K, resolutions. So number one, Resolution 2022-014, approving a list of engineering firms as pre-qualified to provide general engineering services for the City of DeKalb through 2026. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion? City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You're all familiar with our city engineering staff of one, Zachary Gill, who's in the audience tonight. He's been doing an excellent job for our city and for our organization and is much appreciated by the people that we work with in the private sector as they work on some of our larger projects. And as you know, for, for years we have hired, uh, other consulting engineering firms to help us with some of the, the bidding and permitting and construction observation on these larger projects, including our annual street maintenance, which you're very familiar with. So, uh, rather than to just pick willy-nilly what, uh, firms we will work with, uh, we periodically, every three to five years or so, come up with what's called a pre-qualified list. In other words, we do a very, uh, deep dive to look at the projects that they've worked on in our area, not just in the City of DeKalb, but elsewhere in the county and the region. Uh, we look at their fields of expertise, have they changed? Uh, are they expanding, contracting? Uh, will they give us a full range of services and will their experience hold up as we need it? And the state of Illinois pioneered this a long time ago. We do a lot of work with the state of Illinois and it's expected that we would have a pre-qualified list. So, uh, the analysis has occurred in the last thirty days or so. Uh, the Public Works staff worked with Zach Gill to come up with that. And, uh, the, the list is before you. Uh, the, uh, this action that you will take tonight, uh, does not mean that you've made any specific agreement with any of these, uh, and nor is it a guarantee for future agreements. Uh, city engineer, I think judiciously sees that all get a chance to show us their expertise and in larger and smaller projects. And as they go, uh, so go their opportunities as we go along. We have a number of very large infrastructure projects planned in the next couple of years and we need a list like this to work from. So we recommend your approval.
Comments or questions, Counsel? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. All right, Agenda Item Two, Resolution 2022-015, authorizing an agreement for engineering services with Fairgram and Associates LLC for the 2022 General Street Maintenance Program with a fee for FY 2022 not to exceed $135,000. Can I have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Before, uh, I just received a note from Zach Gill. There's apparently a typo in this in the title.
Oh.
Uh, it said $135,000, but he's telling me it's $170,000, correct?
Correct.
Correct?
No worries. So I will repeat it then. So Resolution 2022-015, authorizing an agreement for engineering services with Fairgram and Associates LLC for the 2022 General Street Maintenance Program with a fee for FY 2022 not to exceed $170,000. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Be right with you.
The calculator is out.
Well, just checking to see, okay. Uh, that changes the calculation on the percentage, but we've got that. Okay, so, um, right out of the box, here's, here's an opportunity to award a contract to an engineering firm that would help us with the annual street maintenance. Uh, Fairgram is not a stranger to us or to our street maintenance program and they had the contract for the last three years. Uh, some of the work that's on our program this year was, was slated to be done last year, but we've decided we amplified the water improvements for instance on 13th and 14th and the sanitary district stuff. And so they're, they've had their hands on, on a good part of what is going to happen this year. So we thought we would extend the contract, we would recommend that you extend the contract another year. Uh, the, the total is gonna be, of, of all of our products is gonna be about 2.2 million. And with that increase, we're still, uh, uh, 7.7%. You, 10% is kinda the interest industry standard, so I think it's a fair price and for one more year.
Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution 2022-015 passes. Good catch there, Zach. Always on the job. All right, moving to number three, Resolution 2022-016, authorizing the purchase of two Ford F-250 Super Duty pickup trucks through Marl Brothers Ford for the Public Works Street Division in an amount not to exceed $79,950. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, the, the trucks in question are, uh, trucks that are on our list in the city budget for FY 22 and, uh, a budget for them, uh, taking, taking notice of the fact that we would be, we'd be purchasing through the state purchasing system, uh, identifies, uh, just under eighty, or eighty thousand. And the total of these two come, come in at $79,950. Originally, we had planned to do one truck and a, a leaf machine, not, not just a couple rakes and a big bag, but, uh, a powered machine. Uh, it just happens that in the last year, those, uh, machines have, uh, become dear for different reasons. Uh, and the forty thousand we had envisioned will not be sufficient to replace the leaf machine. We needed another truck. We figured the prices we were getting on these trucks were, were very good. So, uh, we will, uh, recommend that you, uh, purchase both of these trucks to stay within the budget. Uh, and then next year, we'll go after a leaf machine if we, we'll have to spend a little more time looking around.
Counsel? There was a post on our Facebook page of, uh, the Street Division fixing one, not fixing one of the trucks, repainting one of the beds of a truck. And there was a comment about, um, the lack of maintenance. But I think we can all see when we have, what are these, twenty-one-year-old vehicles and twenty-five-year-old vehicles? Um, the care and feeding of your fleet. Uh, Andy, I, I gotta give you a lot of credit. You, you make a, you make a vehicle last well beyond its useful life. So we really appreciate the, the time and energy. I know your crew spends making sure that those vehicles keep moving for as long as, as possible. All right, roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution 2022-016 passes. All right, number four, Resolution 2022-017, authorizing the purchase and equipping of one Ford F-350 Super Duty pickup truck through Marl Brothers Ford for the DeKalb Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $56,620. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second. Mayor, I think you got the number, the amount wrong.
Fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty?
Did you say fifty-six, sir?
I don't know if I did.
Yes, I, I heard fifty-six.
Well, beautiful. Uh, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars as written.
Second.
Who moved? Uh, Alderman Favor moved and Alderman Smith seconded. Uh, City Manager.
Before I started this, I, since Mayor, you raised it, I, I didn't know about that Facebook too. So I think all of us would be chagrined if the backs of our, uh, SUVs or compact cars or whatever we drive, uh, had rust on them as there was rust in that picture. But you're absolutely right. These, that was on a, a dump truck, which gets gravel and sand and mud and dirt dumped into it with, from a backhoe, which also bangs into it, uh, all year long. And so what we do, as we can, and when we, if it's out of service for a few days, if we have to, we paint them. And we fix the rust. And that's what we were showing. So, uh, it was a glib, cynical, uh, comment, but I have to say, it belies the fact that our Public Works Department takes very good care of its equipment, however old it is. Okay. Moving on. Um, so this is a fire department purchase. And again, uh, this is a vehicle that we can get through state purchasing. Uh, we've had a brush truck that's been on the list for about four years. It's been on the list the three years I've been here and one year before. And we put it off and put it off. Uh, it's, uh, nearly twenty years old. It, it does a lot of the things that, uh, pickups do for other departments. Uh, it, uh, is used to fight field fires. It's especially outfitted for that. We do have to do that from the, uh, from the time that the crop gets in the field until, uh, well past harvest. Uh, we also, of course, are on a, a recall system with other communities and we do provide help to them, whether it's Malta or Sycamore or whatever. And this truck has seen its, uh, last days, probably. It's, it's out of service now and has been for some time. The cost of the repairs will be excessive and we are hoping not to have to make those costs, which is why this is on your agenda tonight. It was budgeted. We anticipated this. We got a, we, we got a price within our budget and we'd like, uh, your support.
Counsel? Hearing none, roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution 2022-017 passes. All right, moving on to number five, Resolution 2022-018, approving a specialized aviation service operation agreement and community hangar lease, Aeromotive. Uh, can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Um, there is public comment on this. So, uh, Eric? Hey, go ahead and come up to the podium. Um, just a reminder, you have three minutes to, to talk. Um, so brevity is awesome, but, uh,
Okay.
Uh, go for it.
Uh, I'm Eric Dentz. Uh, I am the owner of one of the four businesses currently at the airport. Uh, I've been there now twelve years. I own, I'm one of the three out of the four owners that actually own structures on the airport. So, I mean, we all have a very well-based interest in the airport and actually growing and bringing more business in.
Appreciate it.
The only thing I see with the current proposal is we've all had to uphold a standard that was brought to us up to this point, that's been pretty strict. Uh, and, I mean, it's been a huge financial burden to some of us going through hard times to keep those minimum standards, uh, you know, as closely satisfied as possible. Uh, you know, lowering that and setting a new standard kinda opens, you know, everything we've done to uphold those over the years. It's kinda, I don't know, like makes all the financial and all the hard work that we did, I, I don't know, just big change. Uh, but by making a change that direction, it also opens up the city to a bunch of other things on the FAA side of stuff. Uh, so it's just, I, I don't know, I think it just needs to be looked at a little bit more and on the giant change of, hey, you gotta have this much space and do all these things to do what you wanna do. And now drop it down to a, a little more than a quarter of what we had to start with. Uh, so, I mean, that's really my only comment.
So looking for a little fairness is what I'm hearing, yeah?
A, a little bit, you know? I mean, it, the minimum standards were in pla, I mean, that's really the minimum that you need to do just about anything at the airport. Uh, and it just shows that you have the capital, the business plans, e- everything in place to actually be successful. You know, all your parts are there to do your best to be successful at the airport. So that's really it. I mean, I, I'd love to see the new business at the airport. It, we all benefit from it. I mean, all four of us that are currently there now need each other to operate. So that's really it. I just think it needs a little bit more looking into to make sure that we're not stepping on any toes or not doing something that might jeopardize state and federal grant money down the line because things were not equal, stuff like that. So.
Appreciate your comments. I look forward to the discussion we're gonna have right now. Thank you. Yeah.
Can I, can I ask Eric or the City Manager, um, what standards may be different?
Yeah, let's, let's let him get into the explanation. I know Alderman Favor is pretty knowledgeable about this particular topic too, so. And I, I need, I think between what's gonna transpire, we're gonna get some of our questions asked and then we can go on from there. City Manager, you wanna kick it off?
Sure, thank you. So let me just describe the, uh, what's before you tonight and then we can talk about the standards that apply, uh, as they've been described to me by our city attorney and by the airport manager. So, uh, what's before you tonight is a proposed, uh, lease. Uh, it's for space within our community hangar. Uh, we have other equipment that we keep in there and from time to time, we lease space, usually on a temporary basis, for, uh, uh, aircraft that are oftentimes like in the colder weather that are, uh, probably in better shape if they're parked inside overnight than, than not. So, uh, the particular firm is Aeromotive Services Incorporated. They're located in, in Elgin. They've been in business since nineteen ninety-six. They do some very specific things. And what they wanna do is, is even more specific and, and, uh, detailed in, in our, uh, space, which is a forty-by-thirty-foot space, twelve-hundred-square-foot space in the community hangar. And, uh, they deal, uh, with, uh, the repla, the insertion and replacement of avionics. So in the, in the console of an air, I'm gonna betray my ignorance here, and the airport manager can help me with this if she'd like. But, uh, in the console, uh, there are a lot of wires that lead to the electronic, uh, brain, if you will. And, uh, if there are issues with that, then that can be replaced, uh, with, with a kit that they have. And that's what they want to do. They wanna have a very small operation work on one aircraft at a time. This is a trial to test our market, to see what our own users and also tenants' needs are. And if it works, uh, then they would be interested in engaging us in maybe more space or a larger, uh, longer contract. Uh, the other thing they needed would be some office space and I've detailed that in the background for you. Uh, for the privilege of their repair area, uh, the license would be, uh, or the, excuse me, the fee would be $400 a year in addition to the rent. Uh, and, uh, this is an FAA-certified aircraft repair operation. This is not a fly-by-night, hey, I've got an idea, I bet this would be cool. So, uh, in the pursuit of the contract that's before you tonight, uh, City Attorney Matt Rose has been involved with Renee Riani. They have investigated what the FAA requires for repair of this nature and what could be done at our airport. And also, obviously, with an eye to, uh, the, the chief funding, uh, sources for, for work that's done at our airport, which is the, the federal sources. So the last thing we at the staff level, the airport manager, the city attorney, you would want would be to put any of that in jeopardy. We've been a beneficiary of about $50 million of federal aid over the last twenty-plus years. We're not looking to, uh, jeopardize that in any way. So, um, I trust their judgment and, uh, that's why this is before you tonight. Uh, the proposal, uh, also has to meet our standards for, uh, insurance. Now, I can't speak to other leases. I don't have in front of me, haven't done a, a research. I didn't know Mr. Deans was coming tonight and I looked at his lease to see what the differences might be. There may be difference between other leases and, and this lease. This represents, uh, as the city attorney has presented, as Matt Rose has presented to us, a, uh, a first-rate, uh, exposition of what our expectations are and also, um, proposes to engage us, the city, with this group for, uh, two years with the possibility of extension, but that's all about performance and so forth. So that's, that's what I know. Uh, be happy to yield to, do you have anything you wanna add, Renee? Okay. Um, but for now, and then, and then just open it to questions. Uh, the, the company was, was eager to get started. Uh, we said we wouldn't be able to get a lease before you until, uh, the middle of February. And so they're also anxious to know what you think.
Alderman Favor.
Thank you. So obviously, I, I wanna make sure that we're being business-friendly. I wanna attract business, especially to the airport. We, you know, are, one of the charters that we've had is to, to, to make the airport profitable and to be self-sustaining. So anything we can do to be business-friendly and to attract new business, I'm all for that. Um, in the same vein, I would also wanna make sure that we're being equitable to all of our stakeholders. The current, uh, businesses that have been supporting the airport have been providing revenue and income, you know, to, to our community. Um, and so I was contacted this week by a couple of people. Uh, I was given a contract, or a, an airport minimum, um, I forget the, pull up the document, I forget the name. The, kinda the airport minimum requirements is what it was. It was, I think it's like an eighteen or twenty-page document that each, uh, time these, our businesses signed a lease, they were given this. So for instance, in, under the terms of this document, for this particular business to come into the City of DeKalb and set up shop at the airport, they would require, I think it's a minimum of fifty-eight hundred square feet.
Ah.
So then if you were, if you did that plus you were in AMP, you worked on airplane engines and, uh, airframes, you would have to then add to your business fifty percent of what's required minimum under that business. So if you were in business doing electronics as well as being in AMP, you now have to have about eight thousand square feet.
Wow.
So eight thousand square feet of rental at the airport is pretty expensive because hangars are in very short supply. So I, the reason I'm bringing this up is there has been an expense, um, due to regulations that the city has had in place that likely none of us have been aware of, but that drove costs, you know, it's just like, um, I was talking, to me, it would be like our, our minimum parking requirements that we have, like, do we really need, you know, for every so many square feet, do we really need a parking spot if you drive by any business in DeKalb today? The parking lots are generally empty. That, we could probably reduce those. So, um, you know, I, I, again, I wanna be business-friendly. I wanna attract new business. Um, I would like to potentially either review our document of, of air, air, airport minimum requirements and, and adjust those. There have been, like I say, there's also been, not just the square footage requirements, there's a, a requirement, I've been told there's a requirement for liability insurance that goes above and beyond what is required at our neighboring community airports.
Is that in that document you're referring to?
It's in the same document. There's, I mean, it's a lit, it,
Yeah.
It's a twenty-page document and it has a lot of prescriptive details on, you know, what would be required. And my understanding is while not every letter of that document has been followed, cause there are, there have been some variances. You, there's a shared, you know, the, the, the FDO is shared, uh, entrance and lobby and things like that. So, so one of the businesses out there doesn't have a lobby and they don't have that. But, um, yeah, I just wanna make that known. I wanna make that, um, make you all. yeah, I just wanna make that known, I wanna make that, um, make you all aware of that. Um, that, that we're making an exception that is really significantly less than has been asked of other businesses doing business at the airport for some ten-plus years.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I just say, it, it strikes me, and I don't know if it strikes anybody else in the audience or here, our problem is not what's before you tonight, our problem is we had distinctly anti-business standards. This is two thousand and seven, no one even knew about this. I mean, no one obviously has adhered to it with, with, uh, leases that have been done for hangars since then, except for whoever was unlucky and in the line of sight of whoever was negotiating these. And I'm sorry for Eric, is that, if he's one of them. And as I told him before the meeting, I just introduced myself again, I just said, you know, bring it in. And if you know somebody else, bring them in. This is not a, a watering down, this is, this is a standard, I, I, I trust our city attorney to know what the standards are. Uh, I'm guessing that back in two thousand and seven or that period, there were some people on the airport board said, well, what about this and what about that? Uh, and, uh, were quite, uh, aroused by the power they might have. And it got to the council and the council probably say, yeah, the airport board did it, and here it is. And then they had a, probably had an airport manager and, uh, and others who said, yeah, that's the way it should be. And look what we've got, we've got an airport that doesn't pay for itself. We've got hangar leases that are all over the place, how many hangar leases do, how many T-hanger leases do we have?
Five.
Well, five different ones, and how many overall, how many hangars?
Uh, approximately seventy.
Seventy, so, can you, I, 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 we could take a month of Sundays and, and read back. But what we oughta do is what we've been doing, I think, for the last couple of years. As, as leases expire, we've been trying to bring them into the twenty-first century, not minimizing the standards and the safety, which, which is important in, in any airport operation and hangars too. We want to exclude things that put neighbor, neighboring hangars at risk and so forth, and we've been doing that. Matt Rose has looked at every one of them, they meet FAA requirements. But I think truly, and, and I, I truly invite Eric to bring his in, we'll look it over. Uh, if he's paying an extraordinary amount of money, uh, I, I would think the impetus here is to make those better. And, uh, so this firm, we can, we can, uh, one thing we could do tonight is just say, let's sit on this till, till we have a chance to do all that. Uh, this firm will be gone, they, they've been waiting for a month because they didn't know you don't meet every day. And, uh, so, uh, it's been sitting and we had an extra time, and now we're, we're back, we had three weeks in between meetings. We were hoping to be able to execute this tomorrow. If, if you don't want to, we'll, we'll follow your lead, uh, and then we'll, we'll clean this up, it'll take a little while to clean up and, and maybe we can go back to them at some later point.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I don't speak for the entire board, but I absolutely think that cleaning up the messes of the old regimes is an important thing, and as we discover things like this, we should readdress them. So I give my full support, not only to the, the proposal this evening, but to, uh, re-assessing those leases for a much more modern outlook.
Alderman Morris?
Yeah, I'd say the same, I, I support this, um, resolution tonight. But I certainly wanna see us prioritizing, um, straightening it out so that this becomes fair for all of the other tenants.
Alderman Smith?
If I understand right, we, Eric, you have unused space, I'm gonna go out on a limb, right? That, would that be, uh, the wrong assumption?
Initially, it was about twice as much space that was required to run my business. And so was, and it was just something that we had to do. And I'll, I'll also say that my SASSO, is the acronym for the contract that we have, was renewed last year and it quotes this minimum standard list at that, in that contract. So, they've all been renewed, we renew them sometimes every two years, three years, sometimes on signature. So, it, the documents they folded that whole time with either somebody not knowing what was in there or just kind of accidentally being overlooked, I don't, by no means, you know, I think it's just overlooked.
Well, I'm, where I'm going with that is I think we have a waiting list for T-hangers.
We do.
Is that?
Correct, yes.
So, I mean, I can see a win-win on both sides here, that if we have one, it's too much space that, I mean, am I going down the wrong path on this?
Well, it, it may be that he's renting more space than he needs, but it's in the same building, you know what I mean?
Right, okay.
I owe my neighbors.
Okay, thanks, thanks Eric, I didn't miss that, I apologize.
I owe my neighbors, so that is.
Oh, I appreciate it, so I know how expensive those are, so. Um, I think I, I probably agree, this needs a hard look to be fair out there. And maybe that we, there's some creative, uh, things we can do. I mean, I think council would probably agree, I'm gonna defer to Alderman Faber on that one, he's the expert, so.
Especially maybe going forward, um, Alderman Morris, Alderman Larson?
Yeah, I don't wanna see history repeating itself, cause there's been times in DeKalb's past where somebody has taken a leap, you know, invested in our city, and then other things came along and they're like, oh, but that doesn't apply to you even, cause you've been here the whole time. And, you know, they closed the doors and left, which I probably would've too. And so I, I just wanna be clear on my vote, that if I vote for what's on the table tonight, it has to be that it's not just necessarily that we're gonna re, you know, change this, but there's, you've, you've invested in DeKalb for all these years, and so, there's gotta be something, and back to creativity or something. It's, cause it's just not gonna be, I, I wouldn't be okay voting and just saying like, oops, sorry, we missed it. Uh, there has to be something more substantial, that's for my vote.
Alderman Bird?
And is the creativity allowed within the contract now? In other words, can it be redone or modified at this point? Or does it have to wait until the end of the contract?
It would have to be by agreement.
One thing we thought about, if I may, uh, this goes back a couple of years ago when I first had a chance to, uh, a couple leases returning and a couple, because I was new, a couple of, uh, hangar tenants came to me and said, hey, I, this is twenty pages. And I think we do this in ten, and I think we did it in eight, working with, with, uh, Mr. Rose. But it was very tortured, it was definitely anti-business, uh, and it was done by a previous city attorney. So, uh, uh, and it was torturous to read and also to live by. Uh, we, we made an improvement, so I thought at the time, well, you have a couple of choices, we can do this piecemeal, it's gonna take ten years, or it's gonna take a while, it's gonna take ten years, might take four or five, cause some of them are longer term. Uh, or we could send a notice out to all the, uh, tenants and just say, uh, uh, we're, we're gonna redo all the leases, we're gonna send you a model lease as soon as one is ready, and we'd like to have a, you know, a, a community meeting about this and so forth. Uh, the, uh, consensus at the time was that we would send people into outer space with that. Because people had, had, like Mr. Deans, had already invested a lot of money according to whatever the lease was and, and, and was it gonna be more or less, or what? So, well, let's, let's still take them as they come due. So, I did it, uh, we could do that again, uh, or we could do something else, but I think I agree with the council a hundred percent. This is, this is something that, um, is gonna take a little time to sort through. And we need to look at, anybody right now, and I think we can send the word out, anybody who's unhappy with, uh, conditions like Mr. Dean says, uh, should come forward and not suffer in silence.
Would that be something we would recommend, like maybe going through the airport advisory board, that twenty-page document? And bringing a little reality to it and a little contemporariness to it, I don't know if contemporariness is a word, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we could certainly, certainly do that, we could invite in the businesses that are on the field and, and get input and, um, you know, we've, we've also, we have a, a marketing, uh, planning meeting scheduled in the near future. That would also be great to have, you know, input from other airport attendees or lessees and things like that.
Cause I think, I don't think we can go back in history, but going forward, we can definitely be, as, as Alderman Faber put it, equitable to existing tenants out there and figure out what that might look like. So I think for me, I mean, I, our city manager has this philosophy of being business-friendly, uh, right? And, and doing it in a, a high level of integrity, and I think all of us are on the same page that we wanna, we wanna be equitable. Um, and we wanna create a business-friendly environment, especially out at the airport. So I, I like what I heard most of you say, I trust passing this tonight, knowing that we're gonna go back and revisit, um, what's currently going on with the businesses out there and see how we can be equitable to all of them as well. Alderman Perkins?
Well, so, so that's, I, I, I thought we were on the same path, until you went down the path of, of passing this. To me, I, I think it's, it needs to go back and consider align what our practices have been and what we'd like them to be, and then determine how this fits in with that. You know, cause I, I don't know that, even though we have something in front of us, going forward with something that's inconsistent with what our precedent has been, doesn't, it doesn't seem fair to me.
We do do, we do one-offs quite a bit when a, a certain project comes before us, if we feel it's beneficial to the community or whatever the, the, the approach may be, and we always have the ability to make that one-off decision.
Mm-hmm. I, I understand that, but, but my concern is that we've got, got someone who's, who's followed the rules, as the rules have been written and they've been clear, and agreements have been based on those rules. And then we have a one-off that's clearly violating what they are. And I don't know that we've determined what our direction really is going to be with these things, that's, that's my, my reservation.
Alderman Morris?
I would, I was thinking that perhaps as we consider this, and if we were to pass it, we would consider this the new precedent and recognize it as the, uh, new standard, basically.
It was brought to my attention when I was elected that there was a large group of people who were working behind the scenes to stifle growth in the city of DeKalb, and their agenda was not in line with mine. And now this has brought to light yet another example of ways that we can stifle growth, uh, in a stealthy way. And I think that that's something that we, no one on this board stands for, and we definitely need to adjust that. So I like Alderman, Alderman Morris's idea that we set this as the new standard and move forward from there.
City manager?
Uh, just, just two thoughts, so, um, things evolve. Uh, we have, uh, a patchwork of, of, of uses in our zoning map, which, uh, some of whom are legal non-conforming, uh, some of them, uh, are just, uh, illegal non-conforming, but, but remain, because there's only so many hours a day, so many years in a decade, I mean. And, and if there is, if it ain't broke, why are we assaulting? Uh, and, uh, so we've, we've tried to work with people to get things in a better place. And that's what we're trying to do with, uh, the leases of late. Now, uh, I think particularly the commercial leases, not, not necessarily the, the, uh, well, I guess they're all commercial leases in a way, but those who are actually making their living out of the services they provide at our, at our airport, uh, should be first in line, and we should look at those. Now, when I give a document, when I, when I, uh, say, uh, here are a half a dozen things, whether it's John Donahue or to Matthew Rose, uh, we have a dialogue about this, it goes on some days, sometimes longer than that, uh, they do research, I do research. Uh, in this case, my research wouldn't have been anything but to look at what our city code says. That standard is not identified in the city code, I would've seen it. Uh, it was in a drawer somewhere, but, and in some leases, referenced as an exhibit probably. Uh, and when that lease was redone that he was referring to, I'm, I'm guessing that, as he said, it was an oversight. It was considered in there, and if nobody's complained about it, I guess that's right, I guess that's the way we oughta keep it. So, uh, there is some work to do, but I don't think we need to take all seventy of those right now and try to make a better product and then come back to this. I think we could do this tonight, I think we could line up appointments over the next couple of weeks and look at the other leases for those, those, uh, people who are making livings at the airport. That, that seems to be the fir-, I see you're nodding your head, I, I would agree. And, uh, let's take a look and see if there are some, uh, inordinate, inconsistent, unfair practices that have been, uh, continued over the years.
Alderman Faber?
I, no, I would, I would be in agreement with that, um, like you said, I, I think, you know, again, I think we limit it to the, uh, the SASSO agreements, those are the service agreements with the different businesses. Again, there might be, I'm not, I'm not for, we're not gonna go back and pay back rent or refund or rebate or anything like that. But I, I do think there might be opportunities where, you know, again, there might be a requirement for a, an amount of insurance that was above and beyond what, what might be comparable, or might be a minimum requirement, say, of the FAA. Um, and, and by reducing that amount, they might save money on their insurance premiums. Or there might be some other, maybe there's potentially an opportunity to downscale a business if they don't need all the space that they're using. So I, I agree with that and, and, um, yeah, no, I, I recognize that everyone's desire is to be business-friendly and, uh, you know, very happy that, uh, that we're all unified on that front. And so, um, I, I could see, I say, reviewing the, the four open leases or current leases that we have as well.
And you're comfortable with approving the one tonight?
Yeah.
Alderman Bird?
Yeah, uh, any kind of a timeframe when this, do you think, I would be more comfortable if I knew that, let's say, this would all be resolved or reviewed within sixty days, or, I, I just, I would prefer it not floating out there. So what do you think?
Uh, that's more than enough, uh, I mean, uh, Mr. Deans will probably be bringing me his lease tomorrow, I hope. There are three others out there, maybe one more that we're, I'm not aware of.
Thank you.
And we'll get that, these are SASSO agreements, so the Specialized Aviation Service Operator, that's what it is, that's what the acronym means. And, uh, whether they are or not, uh, we'll look at them and then we'll start working down the line.
Great.
Further comments, question, yes?
Does, does that sound fair?
I mean, all the leases are a little different, the lease is a completely, the SASSO is a separate document. I mean, it directly states that.
Did he come up to the?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, come up to the microphone, please.
Sorry, sorry, I, I mean, the, the SASSO document directly calls out having to stay in compliance with this other document that was the minimum standards. So, it, the leases, or the SASSO agreement leases that we're calling it, that fee stays the same. That, I mean, that's one fee for basically the, all four of us at the same rate, that's never changed. It's the requirements on what we have to have to run the business is what is changing. You know, it's, that's a huge impact, I mean, just, if I were to have even dropped down four hundred square foot of space, that impacted my business almost three hundred thousand dollars over the last twelve years. I mean, that's huge, I mean, that was a whole separate unit that I had to lease. So it's, I mean, that, that's, that's the impact. I mean, anybody that's gonna come in and run a business is gonna understand that there's gonna be a minimum requirement to have to meet. Not just insurance, but, I mean, space, you know, capital. I mean, I had to show fifty thousand dollars in the bank of capital before they would even propose my, you know, even look at my application to, you know, for a SASSO agreement.
I, I believe we're on the same page, whether we're using the term lease or the SASSO agreement, that it's the spirit of doing business out there is what we're gonna address. And you've got a, a great advocate here with Alderman Faber to be able to help us, uh, walk down that path.
And adjusting that will make the airport even more marketable.
Yeah, we're on board, absolutely, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So, so, so to clarify then, we're not really talking about the leases, we're talking about revising that agreement, that minimum agreement that underlies the leases that the leases are written on.
Uh, I wasn't following that, but I will tell you that there's two pieces there. And if there are two pieces in a lease, then we have to see how compatible they are with where we want to be.
Cause it's, it sounds to me like you have the agreement, the agreements with, with the four people, and the leases are predicated on the agreement, so.
I, I don't know, I, I think we'll get the city attorney involved.
Okay.
Okay?
That's, that's.
Yep.
And again, for me, it's the spirit, we know what we wanna accomplish in the spirit of this. So that's what, whether it's in whichever agreement, we need to go after and, and address that, no matter which agreement, that's it.
Gotcha.
Alderwoman Larson?
Just one question, so on what's in front of us tonight, who came up with the space needs of, of what they wanna rent? Was that, they, they asked for that amount?
They asked for that and we, or thereabouts, and we looked around and the area that we marked off, and there was conversation in the hangar with this gentleman, with Renee Riani, and we kind of taped it off. Riani, and we kind of taped it off, and would that be enough? Yes, that will be enough. It came to 30 by 40. It didn't involve our having to remove equipment or other aircraft from the community hangar. It's nestled in the back right corner as you're standing at the door looking to the back of the hangar, and it's just big enough for one. I thought, well, maybe we ought to make it a little bit bigger, we had room, but, no. So anyway, it was negotiated and arrived at the mutual agreement of the parties, so that's what that's for.
So I guess basically the city was negotiating without following our own rules, that's what I'm kind of hearing.
Can I make something really clear? That's a document that has no tether.
Okay.
It's not tied to your ordinances, it's not what you have decided, you can decide tonight that this is the rule for that tenant.
Okay.
It isn't the same as saying, well, this used to be a stop sign, now it's, but you're treating it like a yield, so, you know, no, it's not that, there's no connection there. There isn't, there isn't anything that I've seen in a paper trail that says the leases we have today, today, have to. Now, in 2007 and '08, '09, there might have been something like that, but I haven't seen it.
Okay.
And if I did see it, would it change anything? I don't know, I don't think so. I don't think you would want to say to this future, possible future tenant, sorry, we just, you know, we haven't figured it out for ourselves yet, come back in about a year. I don't think that's what we do. If the city attorney says that this meets all of the federal requirements that we have to hold to, and it meets standard compliance in terms of insurance and the rest, and we're named as additional insured, it spells out the indemnification that we expect and security deposits and all the rest of that, I'm going to go with it. I don't, I don't know what else we can do, until we find that there are problems, and then we consider the city attorney, right? But we haven't had those problems.
Alderman Faber.
I may regret saying this, but first, I'll just say, I, no, I love that we are wanting to be business-friendly, or wanting to attract a new business to the airport. If, I will just go back to your comment, if this was actually codified, if this was an ordinance, and we were asking for such a drastic measure, I would actually vote against it. But it's not, and I understand that. But I'm just saying, if it was that, I mean, we did the same thing when we had a developer who wanted to build along Lincoln Highway, and the request for parking minimums was so much drastically reduced. I agree in reducing our parking minimums, but it was so much drastically reduced that I voted no. So, I would just say, I would just make that statement, but I, you know, as we talked, and Eric, we are talking about that airport minimum, we will get that changed, we will get that updated, we will, we will do what is in, you know, what's equitable for the city, what protects the City of DeKalb in terms of insurance and liability, and we'll do what we can do to be as business-friendly and attractive as possible.
Other comments? Do you want to hear from the audience?
Speaker form.
Okay. Your connection to the airport?
I'm speaking over your remote.
Oh, okay. Yeah, come on up and talk to us, and introduce yourself, too.
No, not, I'm calling you up as just a subject matter expert on the topic that we're talking about right now. Sure. Thanks for having me. I'm Carl D'Amelio, I'm the CEO of Aeromotive, and I do have to say I'm sympathetic with Eric. We've been in business for 25 years, we've negotiated contracts, we've had lease agreements in the past, some have been good, some have been unfair, but I'm glad this topic of conversation is up, because in five years, I might be in Eric's shoes. So I'm all for that, absolutely. But we do bring a very good element to the city. We have been in business for 25 years, we have an established FAA repair station, which goes back to Eric's comments about quality, we have no choice but to follow quality and follow standards, and that's our expectation up there, is to build the business up to the requirements that the FAA are asking, but then to expand that business beyond what you're currently seeing. You see a lot of general aviation coming through this airport. We see other opportunities, not just general aviation, and we want to expand on those other opportunities, and we feel like we have inroads to those opportunities, and we need space to take advantage of that. So I appreciate your time, I just wanted to share my thoughts, and so, again, introduce myself to everybody, especially Eric, because I'm sure we'll be doing business together at some point, and thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions? Alderman Perkins.
So Alderman Faber then, so you're, I want to rely on your subject matter expertise in this, so you do see going back and aligning the agreement with the other folks if we make this concession for these folks in, in the short term?
Yeah, what I'm hoping I heard this evening was that, like, I'll use Eric as an example, if he could take his agreement to the city manager, and we could potentially find an opportunity to reduce his required space, if he doesn't need it, we could reduce his minimum required space, if he doesn't need, let's say, $5 million of liability insurance, if he only needs $2 million of liability insurance, we're going to cut his liability insurance cost, things like that, things that are mandated in a document that nobody has seen since 2007.
Because I do want to be business-friendly, and thank you for showing interest and coming to do business in DeKalb, and, but I think it's also important that we need to be respectful of those who are here already, and, you know, and take care of those folks, too.
Yeah.
You know, and just go with, I'm supportive of that, but I want to assure that we're taking care of our existing people who have been, helped us for years.
Exactly. I think we're, I'm on the same page with you on that 100%, absolutely, absolutely. Alderman Morris.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that, you know, we can go along and change that agreement for Eric, whether or not he needs it now, and I think in that context, acknowledge that he may not need it now, and it may not be helpful at this point, however, recognizing that the changes in the future that your business may experience may prove useful in the future for you, these changes. So I think it's important to acknowledge that we can't go back and write the past differences, but I think it's important to acknowledge that we're making a change now, although we're sorry that we cannot make everything perfect all at once.
All right. So we do have the motion before us to approve ordinance, or sorry, flip the page.
Item 5.
Hang on, yep, I'm getting there. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2022-018, item number 5, before us right now. That's what our discussion is. My feel is we have consensus to move it forward, so I'm going to call roll at this point.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution 2022-018 passes. Fantastic discussion, appreciate everyone in the audience. Eric, appreciate your comments, and we'll make sure that we hopefully live up to your expectations, and we will do as much as we possibly can to be equitable during this process. You have our promise on that. All right, moving on to number 6, Resolution 2022-019, approving a compensation increase for the city manager in FY 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
No.
Exactly. All right, as we've discussed, this was an increase that all staff were awarded for fiscal year 2022, and the city manager is our direct report, so we need to approve, he is awarded the 2.5% cost of living adjustment as well. So we have a motion, a second, any comments? Yes, Alderman Faber.
I just want to say, Bill, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I absolutely feel you deserve this increase in pay. You've done a fantastic job for the last several years, and it's been great for the City of DeKalb. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, 100%. You've been an amazing city manager so far, I heard 10 more years the other night. There was a motion, there was a second, but, yeah, we're getting off, we're getting off cheap in this process, so I can't say enough how much I appreciate your hard work, your diligence, and just all the energy, and basically the portion of your life that you're putting into this, this job, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Wow. All right, so Resolution 2022-019 passes. All right, moving to Agenda Item L, ordinances, second reading, we have none, and then moving on to Agenda Item M, ordinances, first reading, we have Ordinance 2022-009, partially abating the 2021 tax levy in the amount of the recapture revenue of $24,691 from the adjustments for certificates of error, certain court orders, or final administrative decisions of the Property Tax Appeal Board made pursuant to 35 ILCS 200/18-233. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We, as I say in the background, we learned in late January from the county's tax extension clerk that a law that was not well-known, was signed by the governor in the fall, and it has some bearing on the levy amounts that would be extended by the various local tax embodies, and basically what the legislatures thought was positive to do was to, in addition to what you've, we had a lot of discussion, as you know, about the levy last fall, and every tax entity had some discussion, a public discussion, and numbers were floated out there, and they were published, and there were ordinances which defined very specifically what those levies were to be. But the Property Tax Appeal Board meets in the county every year, in all of our counties, and sometimes there are errors which are certificated by the board, and sometimes there are administrative decisions, or even ultimately court orders that change what might be the appropriate taxes for a variety of properties. And what the law says we ought to be able to do is, quote, "recapture" any slight variation in revenues, and it just happens that the numbers that were given to us by the county extension showed that if we were to not abate those little differences, there would be a total of about $18,000, that's real money, $355,000, that would be added on to our levy for our general operation, which in our case is the pension contributions. In addition, the library, which is, you know, we serve in a pass-through function with a library, we get $6,325,000, and then out of our SSA levies, and I can't frankly tell you why two received a change and the other four didn't, but there was $11 that would be a difference. Well, this does, this comes to a total, including the library, of $24,691. My recommendation would be to pass an abatement ordinance, which is what's before you tonight, on both readings tonight, so that we can notify, before there is an extension of what our city taxes would be, notify the county clerk that we are not interested in that extra $26,000, and that, and that the library board is also not interested. Last week, the library board had a conversation about this and recommended staying with the levy that we had discussed at some length here last fall. My reasoning is, I gave it in the background here, I just think we go out of our way to try to be transparent, and particularly with the levy, of all things, it's one of the most important duties that you have in any given year, it touches every property taxpayer, and we carved a number into a lot of pages of documents, and had a lot of coverage of what that was, and now to just, by surprise, and anybody who's not looking at this meeting tonight, all of a sudden, there's just a little variation in what our rate's going to be from what we expected, apart from the fact that we don't know what the AAV is yet, and that will have an effect, but if we do that, I think then we begin to sully the public trust, and this doesn't sound like a big dollar amount, but it's all about what we intend to do and do we carry through on our intentions, and I don't think we would if we approved, if we did not approve this abatement. So that's my recommendation to you, and I ask that you take this on both readings tonight because the extension report is due before your next meeting, and I'd like to get that to the county clerk.
Counsel? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
I'm sorry, you missed me.
Faber.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Thank you.
Moved to waive second reading, approve?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Faber to waive second reading. Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Ordinance 2022-009 passed on first reading, and second reading was waived. All right, moving on to Ordinance 2022-010, approving the final development plan for the First United Methodist Church, 2501 North Annie Glynn Road. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faber. We do have public comment, so we have, Sherry, is it Urich?
Yurik.
Yurik, thank you, and Pastor Jonathan Krail to talk about it. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Sherry Yurik. I am currently the chair of the executive building team for the First United Methodist Church. We occupy the 114-year-old beautiful building next door, which is not a safe building. We have lots of stairways, we have lots of hallways, we have all the challenges that go along with a 114-year-old building and an older congregation. What we have before you is a conceptual drawing of what we hope our new church home at 2501 North Annie Glynn will look like. We have hoped to put this beautiful building on the north side of town when people come in there. What we also want to do is provide a lot of outreach to that side of the community. Pastor Krail would say we want to be good neighbors, and which is what we want to do. Besides being the chair of the building committee, I'm also the youth missions coordinator. I work with youth, junior high and high school age, and I'm really excited to work with kids in that area of town and help provide some outreach and some mission work with them as well. This is a 20-year-old project that we've been working on. In the last two years, we've worked with Dan Savadra and Savadra Associates to get to this point and finalize these plans. We're asking tonight for your approval of our final development plan, we're also asking for you to waive our second reading, which we submitted the paperwork for that as well. We went before planning and zoning last week and got a unanimous approval there, so we're hoping that the city council will support us in building a new church home for our community, so, thank you.
Any questions? Comments, counsel? We've got the experts in the room. City manager? Oh, wait, Alderwoman Morris? Oh, and you must be Pastor Jonathan Krail? Wonderful, go ahead.
Well, in the interest of time, I'll just say amen to what Sherry said. Thank you for your support. I don't think I've ever preached or ever been that short.
Before, want to have Bill just clue us in, Alderwoman Morris, and then I'll take your question first. Anything that coming on? City manager?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get in the way of that.
No, sure, I just, I just want to comment and support. I previously lived right, you know, adjacent to that space, and I think it's been, you know, obviously in the works for a couple of years now, and I was really thrilled to meet Pastor John, I believe, a couple of years ago, already getting involved in the AGN area by attending our, what was it, strategic planning session for the University Village Collaborative. So it was really encouraging to see them diving in, in what was already going on in the neighborhood years before this building comes to fruition, so I welcome them, and I'm excited to see them move forward with this. So I welcome them, and I'm excited to see them move forward with this.
Excellent. City manager?
Thank you. The background, I'll just be very brief. The background kind of reminds us all that it was about a year ago that we were here with the church's rezoning request, and that was approved by the council unanimously and after a lot of review by the staff and by the plan commission and public comment and so forth. And one of the things that the council asked at that time was that the final development plan would come back to you prior to the construction, so that's what's on your agenda tonight. There are some changes, and they were highlighted in your background. The elevation of the church back in 2020 was projected to be somewhere around 86 feet high with a steeple, and now it's going to be about 52 feet. That particular architectural feature has been eliminated from the plan. The plan that was in your background tonight, and it's out on the website, also shows some changes in the color motif of the exterior. There also is an area that will be set aside for a future addition someday, and we hope that that day sometime comes. And otherwise, I think we're very much in support of this. There are plenty of parking spaces for the present and for the future, and we believe that the church, certainly the congregation, has worked very hard for years and years not only to raise the money for this, but also to plan this out thoroughly to the needs of their congregation, and we support their petition tonight.
Comments, questions, counsel? Hearing none, roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
Ordinance 2022-010 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve. Second.
It was moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams to waive second reading. Comments? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
Ordinance 2022-010 passes on second reading, or second reading has been waived. Congrats. Looking forward to seeing the project. Can't wait for the ribbon cutting, can't wait for the grand tour when you're completed. All right, moving on to agenda item N, reports and communications, council member reports. McAdams, you want to go first?
Sure. I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting where we reviewed the upcoming police activity in regards to license plate readers. I learned an interesting tidbit during that meeting, as there was a back and forth between the residents and the staff and the chief of police. Turns out that private businesses can have the same contract that the city has for readers. There are three businesses in town that have private contracts to check license plate readers. If they get a ping on an Amber Alert or a felon in town, that information goes to the police department, and all three of them are towing companies. And those readers are on their trucks. So in addition to the standing license plate readers that the city purchased, we have license plate readers driving all around town at all hours of the day, catching people in the process of driving through town with wanted felonies or with Amber Alerts. So I think, I think we all rest a little bit easier knowing that information, because it's not just the city's work, but it's also private businesses in town for their own purposes, and they're definitely helping us to reduce our crime.
Alderman Smith?
I have no report tonight. Alderwoman Morris?
Sure. So I have been receiving complaints the entire time I've been on council regarding the speed on Ridge Road. So, and I received the most recent of those complaints this past Friday, the speed that people are traveling at, not the posted speed, of course. And so, you know, one of our residents there had a car that was sideswiped, hit and run. So I'm definitely going to be working harder to work further with our city engineer and our city manager to put this to rest, because I feel confident that I am hearing from so many residents so consistently on Ridge Road complaints about the speed and the danger it poses, that we really need to do something different at this point. Zach and I, city engineer Zach Gill and I, met, I think it was two Januaries ago, now talking about the striping, and I know, you know, the past couple of years have been a blur as things didn't go quite as we expected. Myself, I drop off my children at school on Ridge Road and have frequently feared for my life just dropping the kids off. And if I am, then, you know, what risk are our children at? So I just want to make sure we're talking about this, make sure that we're prioritizing it, and work to make changes there.
Please keep me in the loop on that. That'd be great. Thanks. Alderwoman Morris?
I had, I've had a great last seven days. Last week I was able to have breakfast with all the staff at the Public Works area, and I didn't see the thing on Facebook, I don't look at Facebook, but I'm telling you, you go in to that shop in that area, there are trucks, and some of them are 19 years old or older. We have really neglected that fleet, and we're finally catching up on it. That shop is clean as a whistle, those trucks are ready, the first snowflake that flies, that fleet's going to be out there. I just, anybody, I go out there and check. Don't, those trucks are in awesome shape, and they're doing a lot to keep those old trucks running and spend a lot of time. And this morning I got to be at the Firehouse One and see all of our nine safer cadets, recruits, whatever, get sworn in, get their badges pinned on, and all these freshman faces. It's like, God, where are they going to be in like 40 years? Are they still going to be with the fire department? It was just so cool to be part of that today and to see this whole, whole new crew come in, and I hope they stay really close together coming in as they have come in in mass. So really cool thing to be part of today.
Why were you at the street department having breakfast?
I was trying to curry favor, to let them know that I've got their backs.
No, no, what I'm asking is who brought breakfast?
I brought breakfast.
Yeah.
I brought breakfast.
Yeah, that was really sweet of you, so.
Well, and I'll share with you what I share with these guys. I used to have a sign in my house that said, "Housework is something only is noticed when it's not done." And that's what their jobs are like. You don't call and complain, or you don't call and say, "How wonderful, my street, it's so smooth, there's no potholes." "Oh, I've got clean water coming out of my faucet." You never call these people and say, "Great job." But the minute you hit a pothole, "What the heck are you doing? My car hit." So I just want to let them know that as a council person and a resident, I really appreciate all the work they do.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Good guys.
Alderman Perkins?
I'd just like to congratulate the DeKalb Barb Russlers for intersectional title and sending 12 guys to state. I mean, they're a legit state title contender, number one ranked team in the state, so congratulate them, support them, and wish them luck.
Awesome. Alderman Verbic?
Well, it looks like hopefully our COVID data is improving. If that continues, then certainly we're hopeful to have an in-person Ward Six meeting very early spring, hopefully in March. So please, Ward Six residents, business owners, and whomever, please forward me any agenda ideas or topics of discussion.
I'd love to come if you don't mind me coming.
Oh, absolutely.
That'd be great. Alderman Favor?
I would just second the, you know, the congratulations to the firemen and the pinning ceremony this morning, and I'll also give a shout out to the Public Works. I've seen them in the neighborhood with the hot patch in the trailer fixing potholes, and so I just really appreciate that, and thank you for their efforts.
Yeah, and I, just two quick things. Participated along with city manager Nicholas on a new initiative called the Criminal Justice and Reentry Collaboration Program, which is focusing on, you know, there's a lot of terms being thrown around, but restored citizens that are from the city of DeKalb, and what does that look like and how can we help them make a smooth transition? So that's always a neat project that we've been able to watch unfold and see where that initially is going to go. And then also attended the DeKalb Public Library Board Meeting last Wednesday. You know, there was some conversations last time about, you know, more of us attending some of the meetings that are going on in the community, so I really wanted to make sure I went there, and I was really happy to see them also pass the abatement, so we could pass that money on to the taxpayers. So kudos to the library for doing that as well. But other than that, yeah, it's a great discussion tonight, I thought, great input. Again, really appreciate it, Eric. Welcome to our community. Good luck on your project. Super excited about everything going on, and as always, thanks for the time and energy of this council. So with that, I will take, oh, sorry, city manager report.
Just tell you, in response to council member Verbic's suggestion of the 60 days, that tomorrow morning I'll be asking for copies of the commercial leases that would bear on what we discussed tonight, and we'll get digging into them with also the tenants whose signatures are on those.
Awesome, thank you. All right, I'm moving on to agenda item O, executive session, we have none, so agenda item P, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Favor.